Agenda review disposition.
As far as agenda review and disposition, I would like to table some things until January 21st meeting. I'd like to have a January 21st full board meeting and table the calendar approval until then, just because we only have 20 minutes until we have to be downstairs.
Okay, great. Privilege of the floor, number one. Anyone have anything to? Okay, improvement of the minutes from December 3rd. I couldn't see anything. Did anyone? Call. Seconded by Bonnie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any extent opposed or consented? Okay, call. All right, great. School upper loose, uh, okay, next we just have to vote for the full board meeting. Discussion items, budget hearing prep.
All budget hearing prep. All the handouts that are downstairs or in the folder, they're already out at the table for the folks attending the budget hearing in the cafeteria. Remember, just as far as process tonight, Lisa is going to say something, then I'm going to review the significant increases and decreases in the operating budget. Typically, we don't review the warrant articles at the budget hearing, but I think it may be that idea to just kind of review them and have them available for the public tonight. You may get questions about certain warrant articles, whether it be about support staff or the lights. But like I said, that's outside the core budget, but you may want to answer some of those or for timing purposes, depending on how it goes, you may want to forward some of those questions to the January 21st meeting because it's about warrant articles. But really, it's about the budget.
Will we be acting tonight on each of the warrant articles?
The warrant articles were already approved at the last meeting, except with the support staff law being approved tonight.
And at the end of the budget hearing, I'll be asking you to move it forward.
The budget, just the budget.
Yeah.
Where is you?
Just the budget, not the warrant articles, but just the budget to the deliberative session in February.
Doesn't the warrant usually get approved and moved forward also?
Well, it was already approved. The only one is the operating budget after the hearing tonight could be approved.
I remember the misunderstanding that there was still time for discussion on the warrant.
There's always time for discussion in the posting, but at the last meeting, the article about the lights was approved to move forward. And then the budget, you can always, you know, you listen to the hearing tonight, decide where to go from there. So, but tonight, you will move the budget forward to the deliberative. As far as if you had some warrant articles to move through that consultation.
And we have, Dan, you were looking at the time line on that. We could talk on that February.
Yeah, so, good question, my name. So, the warrant articles have been approved individually at this point in time, other than the operating budget, which would be your, you hopefully finalize the proposed operating budget and approve the budget hearing tonight. But if you wanted to approve the warrant document, the full complete document, now that you've also approved the final article for staff agreement, you could do that, you could, you could take the step to approve the completed document that's been typed up and signed at the January 21st meeting. It has to be posted within a few days of that 21st meeting.
So just to get it right this time for myself. If someone is in opposition to one of the warrant articles, the only opportunity a board member will have to speak to that is at the deliberative section.
Well, we could also talk the 21st.
The 21st is another opportunity.
So we could change the warrant at that, on the 21st?
With board action.
With board action?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Dan, can you give, work on the percentage with the collective bargaining increase of 25, 26, what that puts us at? Does it go 1.93 before you get downstairs?
Unfortunately, I didn't bring my laptop, but I had.
I know it's under three, but is it?
Yeah, it was, it was about, we ran the numbers when we finished the process. And with the warrant article for the collective bargaining, we were about 2.38, the number that's coming into my head, but it's between 2.38 and 2.5.
Okay.
But I can bring that, I can bring that number to the 21st.
Sorry, keep asking. So, does that figure include Article 3 at the $749,000?
No.
No.
Okay, so my question, when would be an appropriate time to ask it? What impact would the $749,000 have on taxes?
I think we would say six.
We just, well, sort of the last meeting, we discussed that. We went through it by reach of seven pounds, what impact that rate, that.
I looked at the minutes and I couldn't find it in there, so I, so we can't discuss that at tonight's budget hearing, because we don't know. I mean, can I ask someone to speak to that?
I would suggest the only person who would be prepared, the only person who would be the right person to speak to that would be myself. But unfortunately, I don't have the tools. I need the tools to be able to distribute each cost amongst the seven pounds, but it's not one pound's tax rate that gets in that.
Understand.
Yeah.
Understand that.
Yeah.
But I think the real point is the operating budget tonight, and we can, we can review that on the 21st.
Okay, I just don't want to miss maybe the one and only last opportunity to speak to the respective.
The budget hearing is just the operating budget. That's the point of tonight.
Okay.
Not the lights, not the turf, that's not the turf. It's not happening, that rumor is that it's happening, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, so, and we're going to skip on the calendar approval.
Yeah, I just have, real quick, under other business, Jen, I have one approval. I just have two quick overnight field trips, which I always give the courtesy and time group, the purses, the Granite State Challenge, they're going to their tournament. It's next weekend, it's two chaperones and six students, one overnight. It's something that they've done every year. So I just need your approval on that. And then the larger quiz bowl, national competition is something that they again have done. That is April 21st to the 25th up to Chicago, it's all grant funded. But again, I've presented a number of times to you the fact that we are sending a top team from the state. So we would like your approval on both of those opportunities to continue these kids to compete.
Okay, who would like to make that call?
I should approve the two field trips.
Second.
The state challenge and quiz bowl, seconded by Bonnie. All those in favor? Opposed, extensions?
I'll just leave you with a copy of the most recent podcast for your bedside table.
We don't really have privilege of the floor time. People can certainly speak tonight, though. We'll have time to talk tonight. All right, and consent, I am good on that. We did know in public, I think it makes sense to move on downstairs so that we can get there in time. Start. So, I'm going to ask our motion to adjourn. Tony, seconded by Sheila. All those in favor? Opposed, extensions, okay.
I think we can move forward back.
Or open up the budget hearing, sorry about that. I'm imagining most people hit the table back there with the four warrant articles. We also have a handout on SAV retirement rates, our history, Pemy Baker, school board proposed budget, the breakdown, that's the meeting. 20 industrial medical rates for SAVs, you can see how they've changed over the years. Did you hear out there?
It's kind of breaking in and out, but there, did you say something? There are papers about warrant articles, I think?
Yeah.
They were not out there.
They're out.
Okay. Janice, turn to the box from the board meeting.
In my office?
Yeah.
Sorry, we just voted on them, so they didn't make it down here. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll get those handouts and we'll review them. I'll start with just a couple of brief things. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for coming out. So, we have a budget this year with a 1.9% core, 1.93% core. And now we're up in around two and a half with our collective bargaining agreement. We have the Perkins Grant that such specific specifics as health science, media drafting, culinary, outdoor education autos that was awarded $120,000. The Esser grant money was completed as of 9:30 2024, which is this past year.
Did she use the money?
It's not working well. That's why we shut it off. It's fuzzy. Let's try that.
Is it better?
Okay. Can you hear the fuzz, or is it just that something?
Yeah.
No, it's good to hear you open the fuzz.
Okay. So, our, the core budget was at 1.93%. And with the bargaining, support staff, it's around two and a half, but we'll, we're working on that figure to be precise. I mentioned we have Perkins Grant for a lot of the health ops that are around $128,000. We've also got some Esser grant money title, different title grant monies at $291,000. And we also have some CTE grant money coming in for $70,000, robotics for $7,400, and additional grant money at around $10,000 for an additional of $80,000. Presently, we have committed $178,437 to help reduce taxes and help with that 1.93% that we're dealing with. And again, up to above two and a half percent. We also talk about a sheet that talks, that shares with us the savings that we've experienced with the turnback of the money that we've had. Seven towns support Plymouth Regional High School, four towns presently tuitioning 17 students. We're hopeful for future increases with the tuition students. We're always looking for opportunities to offer programs to our community and in the hopes of maybe generating some additional funds through some educational opportunities. As well as a new agreement that we have gone into a contract with Pasquahnee District, and that will hopefully bring in students to our district high school specifically. And that will generate some additional funds that can help offset the budget. I always like to thank the administration team, teachers, support staff, faculty, parks, crew, coaches, volunteers, club advisors, many of the people in this building, they are at work, those probably on the classroom, whether it's coming into many events outside of school, outside of their workday, coaching, volunteering, and fundraising sometimes for projects that they want to see happen that they don't want to burden the taxpayers with. So we want to thank them for all their hard work, dedication to their positions here at the school, and also thank the SAV staff for their support in the operation of the school. Just a reminder, we're in SB 2 process, so how that works is that we will move up the budget this evening to the deliberative session, which is Tuesday, February 4th at 6:30. And then the second session of SB 2 process will consist on election day. So you will go out and vote at your residential town. And at this time, I just want to, I don't want to look like the handouts are here, but I'd like to turn things over to Tyler, so she can give a snapshot of what that 1.9% is.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry about the fuzziness on the microphone. If it gets that annoying, I can talk really loud at some point. So the budget hearing is to go over the core budget, and afterwards, we typically don't go over the warrant articles, but given that the lights project is on there, I know that there's some questions about that, and then the support staff agreement and the operating budget, we'll review those with you too. But those are the, those are the basis of the warrant articles. So if you turn your budgets to page 20, sorry, 27, which is the function subtotals, I'm just going to kind of go over the significant increases and decreases of the appropriations. And we did have a savings in summer with the retirements from the previous budget, so the total budget increases 1.8 when we came in at our final budget this evening. As far as increases, so line 969, which is your regular education, so that carries the bulk of your regular education teachers. Most of your classroom teachers are in that line item. We are decreasing by a teacher in that line. We are going without one of the world language teachers due to enrollment and numbers. But you see, it does go, go up still, the salaries, and that is due to staff exchanges. It goes to throughout staff increases, so it's different changes with the current staff in there. So that is really down one teacher from last year. The other line that has gone up significantly, and we've seen this statewide, is line 970, the 1,200 account, which is special education. The commitments that the district has to pay for special education has increased from the state over the past several years. So that line has really become a moving target for us. In that line, there's out of district students, which you've always had, but there's new foster care legislation that say a student is removed from Plymouth and goes to Laconia. Plymouth houses that, the cost of that student's special education services until that child is adopted, even though they are not attending the school. So there's a few pieces in there kind of outline, that outline the special ed piece. Some of it includes homeless, some of it includes charter schools. So you are paying the special ed services for kids that are not attending here and attending a public charter school as well. So that's all within that line. The major increase there is our management of some of those out of district kids. So kids that are in charter schools, foster homes, court place, and that piece. And that's the increase of staffing right there. And then there's also a huge increase in cost there. So students that are moving in, that are placed in mental health facilities or residential placements that become our responsibility. It is an issue. We see it. It's a significant cost, and it's something that we have a very hard time controlling. In the past, the state has had to recoup, we've been able to recoup 60%, or they're supposed to recoup 100%. The past year, 10 years, we've received 60%, and I don't know if you saw at the state level, we are now getting less than that, even though it is a law that we're supposed to get 100%. So it's just some other pieces that we, that's the biggest issue that we have in most of our districts with that, and you can see it here right at the high school. So there is an overall increase of $328,968 just in that line, but that's everything that encompasses that special services, student services. What goes along with that is the line 977, speech, OT, and PT. So those are, that PT stands for physical therapy, OT for occupational therapy, again, directly related to special education students, whether they're in district or out of district. So it's just an increase based on the need. SAV services, 982 has gone up, $28,823, and that is due to, there's no new staffing or anything that they're ever adding to the SAV. It's per the formula of the 50% ADM and a 50% equalized valuation. Again, no new positions are added. It's basically all the same, it is all the same personalities. Line 986, 2,600, which is the custodial services. As you know, many, there's been many increases with general maintenance contracts and repairs and inflation as far as getting things fixed and supplies as well. So that has gone up, $79,353. It's also due to some staffing changes as well. So that is that piece. In line 987, you'll see that's up $17,271. We are in new bus contracts, but the majority of that, some of that increase is due to some homeless population, because again, we're required to provide transportation for homeless students that may or may not live in our district, but have had, their last district of residence was one of our towns. So that's, that's that piece as well. But transportation has gone up a little bit. Significant decreases, I'd much rather talk about this. So applied technology program, so that's your CTE center. And that's basically due to staff exchanges, benefits, track changes. That's down $52,84, that's line 971. Line 983, applied tech program or the tech coordinator, we have a new tech administrator, so that is just a change in personnel, down a little bit. And then line 984, 2,400, which is the principal's office. As you know, longtime principal left last year, so there was savings with the new principal coming in. 990 is the principal interest, so that's down about $14,280. And that reflects the cost of the energy performance contract that was put in a while ago, and still the CTE renovation. Lastly, our biggest savings this year was line 993, which was the health insurance, and that is down $191,823. In the past, I know we've talked a lot about GMRs, and their, GMRs do not exist anymore. So that is going to be the actual cost of the health insurance for next year. And the health insurance policies at the high school is anywhere between a 2 and 5% increase. So that's going to be the actual numbers. Where in years past, and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, that was the greatest maximum rate that it could have been. But now we know that's exactly what it's going to be. So overall, it's up 1.8% in appropriations. Did everybody get the warrant articles that were passed out?
I guess first you want to question something? Budget?
Okay, so yes, 1.8. Sorry about the 1.93. That changed since our last meeting, so that's great. So, the budget itself, I think you guys all got the packet. I'm going to open it up to any questions that people might have. You just need to come up to the mic, state your name, and wait on your phone. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the warrant articles. Okay. Do you want to, the warrant articles? Okay. All right, so the warrant articles. Article one, and everybody got a copy? Sir?
Yeah, I have a copy.
Sure.
John Dow and I thought I was. And I'd like to know, when it says general in a lot of the lines, what does general mean?
So he, I'll repeat the question. The question was, oh, it's clear, almost. What does general mean as far as general supplies, general maintenance? So general supplies is anything from your typical classroom materials, that are school one, general maintenance repairs, every general maintenance repairs as far as the upkeep of the building and general maintenance and contracts. So that's typically general classroom materials from year to year.
Another question is, the marketing, what is the marketing? 735, reverse.
Marketing education, that's one about the career tech center programs. It's the marketing program. What was the question around that, sir?
Just what is it?
Oh, it's the marketing program for the career tech center, and it's one of the older, it's the older vocational programming. And they get, it's just one of the programs that we have here at the high school. All right, warrant articles. So, I'm assuming everybody has a copy, sorry about that. To negotiate and execute tuition contracts, it's a typical contract every, every year. This is one of the pieces that you'll be voting on to see if the school district will vote to authorize the school board to negotiate and execute such tuition contracts as the board may determine advisable for students inside or outside the Pemy Baker School District. Like Lisa Ash, the chair, said, we did come up with a one-year tuition agreement with the Pasquahnee District. That is, those are the towns of Bridgewater, Hebron, and Groton. So we will be accepting students here at full cost to help us with the revenue piece as well. With the decline in enrollment, kind of SAV wide, we want to attract, you know, we do want to attract other students from other districts. Right now, we do have kids from four other towns that tuition in, and it's at that full cost per pupil. So that helps us in the long run as far as revenue stream. So just wanted to give you that piece of information. Support staff contract. The board just voted to approve the tentative agreement with the support staff. They negotiated prior to COVID, so their salary, their hourly rates were really low. We have really had a hard time recruiting custodians, paraprofessionals, some of the support staff that helped run the building. It's low as, you know, under, I think some of the rates were around $12 an hour. And you know, after COVID, those rates kind of went up. So we got them more towards the market, and it's very reasonable, four-year contract to help them get up to par. That's again for our paraprofessionals and our custodians. Article three, install lights on the athletic field. So I want to explain a little bit about this project. A couple years ago, or last, when did we talk about this initially?
Two years ago.
Two years ago at the retreat. We always talk about capital improvement plans. What do, what can, what projects should we look at to make our grounds better, the school better? What big projects do we have coming up? One of the issues that came up was the athletic complex in itself. So what do we need to look at? Ideas came up, and I know some form circulating around, you know, a track, a turf field, lights. What are some of the things that if we were to upgrade any of the, any of the fields, what would we look at? And there was really a long discussion about, you know, do you put it in the budget, do you not put it in the budget? Well, the lights is a philosophical issue, and it's a money issue for sure. So it's a community decision. The board voted last, last month to move it along as a separate warrant article because of that. And what they're doing is hoping to fundraise as much as possible, and we're hopefully fundraise the whole thing. I don't know realistically if we can do that, but it would at least lessen the burden on taxpayers to do so. At this point, the, and Todd, and they have you stepped in a little bit, but as far as the need, I think it's, it's not just the need of the handful of varsity football games that we have on Friday nights. What has happened in the past several years, or probably the past decade, and this is discussion that we've had, is there's been a lack of transportation for some of our younger kids to play. So we're talking, this benefit would be more for, is on the football field, our freshman JV teams, where they have not been able to play games, because one, there's no transportation, and two, it gets dark early and then they can't play. So for instance, and Mr. Shador, correct me if I'm wrong, I think our freshman team played the same team six times away because we didn't have the facilities to host it. And so it's, it's, there's one, there's one score on that field, but there's several teams that play. So the Huskies play on that field now, the middle school plays on that field, freshman, JV, and varsity. And we also hold events on that field as well, up above and beyond. And we also hold events on that field as well, above and beyond the sports. As far as soccer and lacrosse, we haven't been able to finish a soccer JV game in I don't know how long. It gets dark pretty early, the soccer games are long, so it just tends to go a little bit longer. And it would be really beneficial for our JV games and our freshman games to get in. We have some of the highest numbers of kids in athletics and it would benefit between three and four hundred kids at this point to get that up there to keep our kids. We are losing some kids that are, that want to go to private school where there's some better facilities. So it's a community decision. The board understands that it really is up to all of the towns. It's not something the board wanted to put in the budget because the communities that say their kids here have to decide, do you want to pay for it? Do you need it? Do you want it? It's up to you guys. So I think that's really what the board's purposes, and to put it on a warrant article, so it's your choice. We even talked about if we were able to pay for it and just put the lights up on the field. It's a philosophical choice that the towns need to make. There's a lot of tradition in our towns and I think it's really something that the communities need to decide on their own. So that's with the lights piece. Am I missing anything, Todd?
Lisa? I mean, the only complaint that I've heard is that really for two weeks, you're going to spend this money? Todd, do you want to talk a little bit about how it gets dark September and how we have so many games to squeeze in? And yes, I mean, as a board member, I'm looking out and seeing, you know, students play in the dark and I worry for them and their safety. And that's in September, it's not necessarily a two-week thing in October.
Thanks, Lisa. Yeah, so soccer, I'll start with soccer. I feel like the JV soccer loses most of the time that we're talking about. This year especially, due to the lack of officials, believe it or not, we couldn't play our games at the same time. So historically, soccer, we would play a varsity game out here on the varsity field, JV over at Plymouth Elementary School at four o'clock. Okay, so then it would be done at six, wouldn't be a problem. This year, we didn't have the officials to run two games at a time, so every game was, JV game was after the varsity, which meant we lost half of every JV game this year and some at the end of last year. So that's sixteen games, that's eight home boys' games, eight home girls' games. Football, Kyla kind of alluded to it. We had to go down to South Egan three times. It was late mid-season, we had to send our teams on the road just because it was going to get too dark too early. There's few teams that their transportation, they can't leave till like three forty-five, four o'clock. So for a JV game on a Thursday evening to start at five thirty, six o'clock is just too late to start. So we lost a couple of games there during football. The end of the seasons, when we're practicing, it's dark out at four, four-thirty. We're trying to practice for playoff games, things like that, just it's too dark. Kyla mentioned, you know, there's boys' varsity soccer, girls' varsity soccer. They both have JV teams. In the spring, go to lacrosse, they play on the same field. Lights would benefit them, same way as it does for soccer. The JV games start after, after the varsity. So different problem in the spring, of course, it's getting, it's dark early. It gets lighter as we go on, but at the beginning of the season, sometimes we lose time up there due to the darkness. Transportation, yeah, we kind of talked about that a little bit. We are pretty fortunate, we can usually get a bus or two after school on any given day. We did have to go late twice. Luckily, we went to Kennett where they have lights. By the time I went to Manchester West, we had to leave at like three forty-five, four o'clock. Get down there, we were able to play because they have the lights on their fields. Opposite happens when they come here, we have to lose our games too to have the lights. Husky youth football, they use our field, as Kyla mentioned. This year, their playoffs happen to be on Saturdays, but some years, they play midweek at night. So it'd be nice, just, they've had some pretty good success to have them be here in Plymouth and play some of their playoff games here. That's kind of it.
And then, I'm just going to go over one more warrant article.
I have a question on that, just a quick question on those scores. Did I do that? All right, Katie Hepburn from Plymouth. And my question is really just for more explanation is, what are you looking at in terms of fundraising opportunities? Many years ago, a few of us had kids at the school then. They were looking at a track and there was all sorts of fundraising and it was great, but because it can't be listed in the warrant article, it got defeated even though there was going to be enough fundraising and grants. So if you could elaborate here a little bit, because I know I can't go in the warrant article. So just trying to get some ideas on that before we go to the next warrant article.
So the fundraiser, we just started, so we're very, it's very preliminary. We did, we have started receiving some funds already. There hasn't been anything formalized yet, just because I think we approved it just about a month ago, right before the holidays. So right now, it's a small group that we're reaching out to businesses. We've done a social media campaign. And part of that is, you know, if there's a fifty thousand dollar or more donation, there's signage on the scoreboard. If it's less than that, there's a... So basically different sponsorships. If it's twenty-five thousand, you get a plaque on one of the light posts for twenty-five years, announcements of evening events for two years on a rotating basis. Bobcat Bronze is ten thousand. Donor will be displayed on a sign for twenty-five years. And then there's Bobcat Pride Scholarship with his two thousand to nine thousand, nine ninety-nine is recognition on the PRHS website, athletic page. And Bobcat Blue Sponsorship under two thousand recognition on the PRHS athletic website during the fundraising campaign. So we did lift the advertising policy to allow advertising on the fields to help supplement the cost of it. So that's part of the new campaign.
How, are you going to take questions now for this or at the end? You want to go to the other?
Yeah, we'll just finish that one article and then we'll take questions.
Yeah, I will be correct. It's just the last warrant article is the operating budget, which I already reviewed and you had opportunity to ask questions, so I'm ready for the lighting questions.
I'm still on lights. The amount you have listed here, is that the exact cost of putting lights on?
That is the most difficult cost.
Okay, so that's...
Given all the they have to do.
You know, hopefully fundraising is going to help if they, but that's...
Yeah, yes, that is the most difficult cost.
Hi, Mary Ann Barnsley, Plymouth.
Yep, you're good.
Question maybe?
No, I was just happy that you announced your name in town, that's all.
Ah, you're welcome. So thanks for putting this on a warrant article. I have about three million questions, so hopefully I'll be able to cover some of them. Let's start with the easy one. Target for fundraising, we actually have a number other than seven hundred and fifty thousand.
The hope, the hope is to have some funds raised to the point where we can adjust the warrant article at the deliberative session, to be honest. Our hope is to get some pretty big donations for that, to shift that for the vote. I'm not sure it will happen or not, but that is the hope. As far as target, I don't think there's been a target date. But we would, even if the warrant article passed, this may or may not answer your question. We would continue the fundraising and would there be an end date that we would have to collect that by? Dan's managing all the funds. Dan Ross is our business administrator.
So there's two days in particular I'd like to call out for consideration of this issue. The first date would be the first deliberative session, which is February seventh?
Fourth.
Fourth, excuse me, February fourth. As of February fourth, a motion could be made. We're all known at that time fundraising results, right? So let's say as of February fourth, we've raised, we've got a hundred thousand dollars donations so far. A motion could be made in the first deliberative session to limit the amount, to still authorize the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars expense, but to limit the amount that will be raised by taxation to say six fifty, because we've got a hundred donations so far. Now that's just limiting the amount that can be raised through taxation. Fast forward to September one. September one is when revenues are finalized for the coming fiscal year and tax rates are set. So we could continue the fundraising through September one if the article's approved in March at the voting. We could continue fundraising through September and then report the full amount of funds raised to that date and further reduce the amount of the expense that's going to be raised through taxation. Does that make sense?
It does. Dan, hold the microphone. So... So come September, or when we approve the warrant, or disapprove the warrant, or turn it down, can we say up to a certain amount? So, you know, seven fifty, but we want you to raise four hundred thousand dollars by September. Is there a way to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
So if, whatever comes out of, however the, as long as the intent of the article is not altered at the first deliberative session, it could be modified by amendment for the vote of those in attendance, those of voters in attendance at the first deliberative session. As long as the intent doesn't change, the numbers can be changed in a variety of ways. Yeah, so the only point being is that if the article isn't approved in March, whatever the language coming out of the first alert session that winds up on the ballot that people go to their town hall and strike yes or no.
Right.
In March. If it's not approved in March, there would have to be a reconfiguration because the cost that's identified in that article is a known number if the project happens this year. If the project's delayed to a future year, we believe the cost will decrease.
Sure.
And to a number that's not known at this time.
So, just so I understand, so we could, you could write the warrant where it said, we would approve it up to four hundred thousand dollars?
So the warrant is, the warrant article is already written.
Okay.
It could be amended at first deliberative session if there was a motion accepted by the moderator and approved by the voters in attendance.
Great. Well, we also have figures to show us the increase to our taxes, you know, so many per thousand.
Yes.
Okay, great, that would be written out in the warrant in the form of March.
Not on the warrant, but there'll be a document, starting with the first alert session.
Okay.
There'll be a document on the table that talks about both the operating budget, the final article on the warrant.
Okay.
And the individual warrant article for the lights. What the tax impact by three to the seven member towns of this cooperative school district would be.
Okay, great.
It was, just, it was, you could also review the last school board meeting where that article was approved.
Okay.
The gentleman who's recording it has it posted to YouTube, I believe.
In YouTube? Okay, thank you.
And we talked about that exact issue.
Great. And what minute?
Mary Ann, just to jump into, can you mention, well, I'll mention, we also could put some unreserved balance funds in there as a board. And we've talked about that, that extensive meeting that we had. So maybe we say at some point this spring, we've got so much in donations, we've got an unreserved balance of a hundred fifty dollars, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, put that there.
Okay.
And then maybe, I mean, we talked extensively about that and the hopes was that at the end it would be maybe a couple hundred thousand.
Okay.
You know, with what we're hearing that's out there and the funds that we could have access to contribute to the project.
Okay. I won't speak for everybody, but, you know, a hundred thousand dollars would be great, just throwing that.
Fifty thousand.
Throwing that idea out. Let's see...
And divided by seven towns.
Oh, right.
So we have to, which not all in Plymouth, because that was a lot of comments out there, it's paying for all the...
Sure. Do you have a percentage just for Plymouth?
Yes, we, well, right now.
If you don't, that's fine.
We will have it for the deliberative.
Okay, that's cool. So grants, I'm assuming we've evaluated grants, including speaking to the Energy Commission and potential grants for that, as well as the co-op? I'm sure you must have, but just for our sakes.
Yes, we've started exploring grants and reaching out to businesses like the co-op for other opportunities, whether it be fundraising or grant opportunities as well.
Do we have a grant writer? Do you have a...
We do, we manage over eighty grants with the SAU office, SAU-wide. So yes, we do have one. We did go for one, but we were in competition with Manchester and their dynamics were more needy than ours as far as, as far that they were awarded the lights and turf.
How, speaking to our Energy Commission?
Is that something, that is something that you were just notified about, right?
Yes, notified about that.
Okay.
We will be.
We have the contact, we have the...
Okay, great, great. Sorry. Quotes on this, I know a gentleman just asked for the number and a seven fifty, sort of rounded. Do we do the usual, you know, X amount of quotes and would you identify?
So we did go through multiple companies as far as the pricing too. The last company was free for the, for the design cost and the costing as well. And that, the other company was going to charge us what, just for the design cost? It was over a hundred thousand? About a, yeah. And this company did it for free and has done most of the turf, sorry, the lights projects across the state at this point, so.
What's the name of the company?
Moscow.
Moscow, Moscow Lighting, it's a reference.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Moscow Lighting, yeah.
In no particular order now, the track, there was talk about a track installation. So pros and cons of doing a track installation as opposed to the lights? More about revenue? I'm assuming both are revenue generators in some aspect. It would be make more money by putting a track in, obviously minus, I'm assuming, a cheaper cost. Does that make sense or evaluated or?
So the whole athletic complex was evaluated last year, I can speak to that point. The cost of both the turf and the track was significantly more than the lights projects.
That's true.
That really was, I think, the initial deciding factor is the cost. It's a multi-billion dollar for the turf, which was a no-go, which we were kind of looking at. And the track has been looked at over the years. We'd have to date up some of those fundraising efforts and where to put it. It's been discussed in the past, it's also a need, but it's...
Right. That's cool. So potentially, the number of students impacted, is there a number, some roughly number?
Were the, were the teams that play on those fields, we figured on any given year, there's probably two hundred to three hundred in that range.
Okay.
Based on any given year, members of those teams.
Which is half the school.
Yeah, total population about six hundred fifty.
So two hundred kids per year would be impacted?
Yeah, two to three hundred, depends on the year, but I guess major numbers vary a little bit.
I can do the math and I won't. Seven hundred, you can add, you can subtract two hundred. Okay. Would we charge, is it... It, would we charge, is it possible to let other towns use our field, obviously we're not, um, to get revenue? Is that a thing? I didn't know.
It's a possibility that he could discuss for other organizations to access the fields, yeah.
And, and we talked about transportation, I'm assuming without lights, us going someplace else. Um, what's the savings on that?
So each roughly, each trip, what's a trip to South Egan?
Sort of like Anheuser or something.
Mm-hmm.
It's probably 300 or 400 bucks a trip.
Three or $400 a trip to get to South Egan, which is Anheuser, which is about as, as far as we go. So I don't know the overall.
Dan may know better, but I think it's about 60 bucks an hour, 50 bucks.
Okay. And, and roughly, how many, I'm just looking for rough numbers. How many times do we have to do that transportation?
Um, the, the way of the schedule is, you know, the 16 soccer games on the road in the fall is probably another 15 football games on the road in the fall. In the spring is the same number across games, 60.
So $300 times 16, is that?
Approximately.
16, would that be 1,000? Uh, PSU, I know some folks have thrown that around as well. Any possibility of using some arrangement of PSU and I honestly don't know, I'm just throwing that out there.
So we, I've reached out to PSU a few times, we have used their turf field in the early spring season situation of the rainy. But they have, they have a lot of use on there for the time that we can get on there very new. Pulling this prep is also up to us every now and then.
Okay. So is there a possibility, certain percentage?
I mean, it varies, depends on what they have on their day.
What else, potential? Okay, um. I swear, I think that's it. Okay, thanks, all right.
Hi, I'm Heather McKennie, Plymouth. And I just had a follow-up question from one of Mary Ann's questions. And with the busing that she was asking about, how much of that is busing that would occur normally because the students are going to away games anyway versus have to?
Yeah, the numbers, the numbers that I gave are what we do anyway.
What you do anyway, okay. So do you have a sense of what you have to do because the fields are, it's too dark to play?
It's more when teams come here that we can get the games. When we go on the road, a lot of teams have lights on the road. And also in the southern part of the state, the refing, there's more refs down there, there's more people, there's more refs. So we can get those two games for soccer, for instance, at the same time. So we send them down and they're different playing at the same time. So it's more when people come here.
And then another question I had for you is, so if the warrant were to fail and you've started fundraising, what would the approach be?
Into no means no article, so the checks go back.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay.
Once a warrant, warrant article fails, that's it.
And is that because, I think Katie Hepburn was talking about, are you not able to do something through fundraising? Or how, does, does the, does the town or does the school have a way to do independent fundraising to pay for something that is a facility that's essentially a public domain facility?
Without the people approving?
Yeah, so.
Or even a dollar, even a zero dollar warrant?
So it could be reconsidered the following year. If, if the article's turned down this year, voted down by the, the board can't move forward with it because the public said, no, we don't want to put down lights. Even if you have.
But if you had $600,000?
Correct, because the, the public has said, no, don't install the lights. The board could come back with another article next year with a different structure. But if the article were turned down this March at the polls, they could double vote.
Roy Seaman from Plymouth. I have one question and that deals with like the ongoing cost. So in other words, if, if this was the new infrastructure, what the ongoing cost would be for the electricity, for security, for extra hours that people are working those fields?
So Todd, do you want to speak to the cost per game?
Can you hear me without the mic? Is that okay? Um, so the cost per game, a four-hour block of time to turn the lights on, it's above $9. That's, that's the overhead cost once, once everything's installed. There's a 25-year parts and labor warranty, so if something went wrong with the lights, that would be covered under the warranty, so that cost wouldn't be incurred by, by the district. As far as people getting paid and working extra, that's kind of been what we do. It wouldn't be an extra, like, there's no overtime for like myself a year later or our athletic trainer or people like that.
Like police or security and that?
So police, we get, for, for football games, we get police detail as we, already for varsity games. So that would be the same. I don't see us having a need for a police detail for a JV soccer game, we would have the lights on for that. So that, all those costs are already in place, that'd be when we play on Saturdays, so that wouldn't change.
Is, is no traffic or anything like that?
So for the varsity football, PD, they, they may think, manage the traffic for the people. So we have two offices on for varsity games over there. And that saves.
London Devarn, Slade, Kenton. I just have one real easy question. You may have talked about that if we put the lights up, that the field could be used off the revenue. Can you give us an idea what those events might be? Um, currently, I don't know what we currently use. Those events, I know graduation and something like that, the festival in the day. And I'm trying to see how the community, besides athletics, it can be improved with the lighting.
Somebody else can jump in as well, but as far as for students, we're thinking more evening events for students as well. Um, just like a homecoming or winter carnival or something like that, that we hold in, in the evening. As far as, as far as community, that would be at the request of the communities as far as what they would want for an event there, but it would definitely be an opportunity. But for the kids, it would be more for events that we can hold at night as part of some of our traditions that we already have going.
Thank you.
Hi, Jen Morris, Plymouth. Um, what is the distribution between girls and boys sports using the lights?
Um, so soccer and lacrosse have girls teams, Washington and JV.
No, I realize that, but like, would they be using lights? Would they regain the lights for their games?
Yes, yeah, especially for the JV games. So soccer and lacrosse, they typically start at 4, sometimes 4:30. Problem comes in when the JV game starts after, say 6 or 6:30, that we would need the lights for that. So both teams would need the lights for that. And then, oh, here's the football team. So there's football, varsity, JV, freshman, high school, and then Husky, youth football.
Okay, isn't that mostly boys, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
So I guess what I'm asking is, out of the 200 to 300 students, what's the percentage of boys versus girls that would benefit from the lights?
Roughly, I would say it's probably about 65-ish boys.
Um, were there any other creative solutions? You had mentioned that we didn't have a different reason of transportation. Were there any other creative solutions that may have been looked at to solve those issues versus just using lights?
Yeah, so the, our transportation issues have, have been dealt with by transportation companies in the grand scheme of transportation problems in our state of the, of Springfield. There's been a handful of times this year that we've had to adjust departure times. When other teams come here, that, that creates, you know, so we don't have as much salary in that. Like John Stark, for instance, who's in the gym now, they couldn't leave before 10 today, you know, just to get here. That, that was a problem that would follow as well. The officials have been exploring some options, but you have to have a patched official. At one of our meetings, there were some people in the crowd talking about, there's a different soccer organization who will patch them that, as opposed to what we use for the high school. So try to reach out, can reach out to those officials. So that, that's one way to look at it.
What would the booster club role be in this in terms of fundraising?
So the booster club is, it's owned, it's separate, the money, that money is separate from the funds raised.
Right, presumably they would want to contribute, um, does this would benefit the football team?
Well, a lot of that money raised is spent in case of a season.
Okay.
There's not a lot left.
Okay. And at this point in time, my kids run soccer, lacrosse all throughout high school and also the Nordic team. How many students participate in the Nordic team versus like the fall or soccer?
Nordic skiing, we probably have 25, 22, thank you, Ann. And then football, this year we had 75-ish.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Kate Harrington, Plymouth. Um, I just wanted to ask, um, asking about creative solutions. Right now, can you explain how we do the Friday night football games with lights? Is it temporary lighting, is it mobile lighting?
Yeah, so the two, the two night games that we've had, we didn't do it this year, but last year and the year prior, those lights were rented. I want to say it was probably $2,500 to $3,000 per game to get those lights here. We rented those from a company out of Manchester, they deliver them. We call in some favors from like recent instruction, they help get them off the, off the trucks, get them set up, along with the coaches and people like that. So that was how we did those lights. Those lights, so the last time we did that, we played Kennet and basically Kennet said, they're not going to play, I had to rent the lights. They're just, they're too low, it's hard to see. It was a great event, a lot of people came out. And the first night game that we did kind of started this conversation. A lot of people were kind of excited about that.
Have you ever considered using that type of lighting for these JV games and practices that you're talking about? I mean, it seems like there might be an in-between solution between what we have now and $750,000 project.
If we could rent them for assistant games, I don't know if that's feasible, if we have company, I haven't.
Thank you.
Todd, would you mind using the microphone?
Sure.
I'm not saying you wouldn't need to.
Are you going to ask me a question?
I didn't think so. Well, actually, yeah. So electricity, you said, you said a number of $9. Electricity use, it's probably really hard, but per game and, and how many games are we? I, I know my business spends about $15,000 a year on electricity. I don't have as many lights as you're laying.
Right. So that was a number that we got, it's the national average is with the Moscow lighting, the LED lights, it's $9 for a four-hour block of time. So that's the number we've been giving and what we, we're using, yeah.
I need to get that number. Um. Yeah, really. And the question about losing private students or students of, sorry, private schools, a, any figure on that? If we talk at 10 or a 100?
Kids going to, to different private.
Right, but because, because we don't have lights.
Or turf. It could be, or a track, so it could be all those things. Um, but right now, I would say around seven, maybe. Yep, that we know of that have gone, that we know of that have told us those are the reasons.
Okay. So all the other 193 choose to come here. Okay, thanks.
Any other?
Hi, I'm Alfie Kerr, Plymouth. I have one more question about the Huskies and I'm interested in what their contribution is to this project. The Huskies, I'm guessing that's the, that's our team, somebody else. Yeah, the Pop Warner, they're using the fields and I'm curious how much they're putting into this project.
Financially, yes, financially.
Nothing yet.
Nothing. So, and they're going to be using the fields for free at this point.
They do now.
They use them anyways now.
Right.
May have local organizations using.
We're talking about $700,000 and the other towns in this surrounding area are going to be contributing. Do we know how they feel about this proposal at this point for their school budgets? We have seven sending towns who are going to, which you said earlier, are going to be part of this project.
Yeah.
Has, is there been any feedback, yeah, thank you, feedback about that?
No.
No.
They haven't come to our meetings.
The Plymouth Huskies have come to the meetings because they're very intense, all, but sending towns, but no, nothing.
Right. And there's been no conversation about the Huskies, Pop Warner to contribute to the project so far?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thanks for this opportunity, Mike Sun, Plymouth. Um, since, so are these lights and fields going to be available for general citizens? Or citizens from around the other towns? For use at night? Like maybe if a group of kids want to get together or if there's an organized ultimate game, an organized touch football game, an organized soccer game? Are they going to be allowed to use the lights at night?
I think we're going to have to look at our use, we already have a use of buildings and facilities policy. Um, we would have to look at that policy again to see what that would include and how small an issue would be or how big, whether it's, you know, Plymouth youth lacrosse coming to the cross fields or whether it's Penny Baker soccer, whether it's Plymouth youth Huskies, whatever it may be, we're going to have to look at what, what we're going to put the lights on for, for events. So I think that's still to be determined.
So the town, the, the citizens of the towns, Plymouth and the surrounding towns pay for it, but maybe we can use it, is what it comes down to.
I don't think that's. Yeah, we haven't discussed that, so.
All right, I have one more question to you. So one of the arguments that I've heard for this proposal is that, you know, Friday night games are a great thing, they bring in tons of people and by having lights, we can have warm Friday night games going later and the more concessions sold, et cetera, and so on. And I wonder if you could just help me understand, like, how much revenue is currently brought in by football games? And what are you projecting that these lights are going to contribute?
Well, Todd, as far as what we have for crowds on a Saturday compared to our Friday night games.
So the two Friday night games that we have had, we rented the lights. So the two Friday night games that we have had, we rented the lights. The number of people that came to those games was about doubled from a Saturday afternoon. Typically on a Saturday afternoon, the gate receipts, it's two dollars for an adult, a dollar for a student to come to the games. We, it's about six hundred dollars. The concession stand, I don't have the number for that, but the two night games that we had were about double that.
Okay, so what's an average night then? Because I think, I think what I heard you say is, so an average night is about six hundred? Or is that on average Saturday?
So on a Saturday, on a Saturday games, it were about six hundred dollars, I think eight revenue.
And you're saying a Friday night, you would double that?
It's about double that, yeah.
Okay. And then concessions, on average, you bring in?
I don't have that number, our marketing, DECA.
Mid-theories based on the attendance?
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking though, yeah, like what's on average?
Between one and two thousand.
Per game?
On a good game, on a really good game, I think it's probably about fifteen hundred. On a mildly attended game, probably about seven hundred?
So Nina and Eric want our concession stand, that's why they have this number.
Okay, great. And then, does that money just go into the general fund for football or where does that money go?
You'll answer that, Janice?
So I, I would, one, those accounts for student activities to the building and those funds?
It's going to the student activity account right now for purchasing the supplies. They, you know, they make the hamburgers and hot dogs and all the food that are at concessions. And then the other money, it's part of the DECA program, which is part of the marketing and CTE program. And the funds go there. And then they're used for purposes that the administration, you know, decides they can be used for. So they could, you know, be used for the upkeep of the lights.
Okay.
So it just goes into the general, the general activity account and then from there it gets distributed depending on? It's not the general fund, it goes into the DECA fund, which is this whole store fund, which purchases all the supplies for those events. So it's specifically for that account.
And then additional monies can go into a regular screen as well.
Right, so at, when that account builds up over time, the student activity fund makes a contribution to the general fund, which is a budgeted revenue. On the last page of the budget that you have, that we were talking about earlier, there's a budgeted amount of thirty thousand dollars from various student activities to come into the general fund to reduce the tax portion of the budget.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, back again, Plymouth. Do our current communities request to use our fields or the high school's fields now? Whether it be Plymouth or any other community, so are you excited to request for that?
So right now, we talked about Plymouth Huskies, Pop Warner, they use the fields. The middle school soccer, they use the fields, it's kind of all part of it. So far right now, like, we use soccer, they use the fields over at Plymouth Elementary School right now. But we haven't had any outside organizations ask really yet right now.
Okay, just curious, how within its current state, do we get asked around sources?
Thank you.
Okay, that will close the hearing. And we will now adjourn the motion to, now we're just doing the operating budget only with the deliberative session on February fourth. Who on the floor would like to make that? Bernie seconded by Bonnie. Okay, I'm gonna do roll call for that. Phil, Paul, Pete, are you in?
Yes.
Great. Barbara, the motion, Carolyn, Patty, Sheila, Paul, Tony. Bonnie made the second. All right. All those papers? All right, you got the roll call as well. Now that's gonna be February fourth at six thirty and you'll make a motion. And a motion to adjourn. Okay. Bonnie. Who seconded, Tony? All those papers? Close.